First program of business. General additions and revisions. No more additions, right Sandy? Can we delete anything? So, I need a motion for us to go into executive session.
I make a motion for us to go to an executive session. Let's see, for what?
For legal matters.
And so, for a legal matter. Do you like a second? Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Say it before we read.
Oh great. Show the capacity.
He didn't read it, did he?
No, I didn't. I make a motion. The select board strongly recommends zoning administration to follow the town attorneys of vice on this matter.
I'll second it.
Here or pass along?
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Start with the 15th of May.
I'm not sure. You can approve it because both Carolyn and I would not have something. So for the May 15th one, I don't think you have enough.
We don't have a majority.
Don't have a majority.
The one on the May 15th one?
Yes.
Okay, the 17th. We have four people and three of us.
So three of us are here, so we can do this one.
Yes, that approved.
Questions or concerns?
If they have anything, then it's me. Yeah, I make a motion to approve the select board meeting minutes from May 17th.
I'll second it.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Hey orders.
One addition of the Jersey barrier concrete, repass concrete. That's gonna be for the Maple Street retaining wall. I think it's $1,400, we're gonna add that to it. Bruce has got the exact amount.
So you're gonna add $1,455 to the one we have? For a total of $71,272.14.
I'll make the motion for $71,272.14.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Those? Phil's not here yet, I see.
Don't tell the road commissioner. Okay.
I'm in the honorable mention. We have Gary Fredette and Patty Bowen thanked for painting the boy with a boot. Bill Olson for turning on the fountain's water. And myself and my wife, that didn't need to be in here, for removing the barriers securing Half End Lake. So, public comments. Do you have any public comments tonight? No. Longford Day has a fireworks request.
Yes. Good evening.
Hi Maria.
Hi. And I apologize for not submitting this before, but I have, I do have the display permit here that only is missing a signature from the select board chair. Mr. Hughes, the fire chief has signed it. And we've got a plan for the first light search. And I've talked to the, I talked to Chuck Reno of C&amp;Z Fireworks, who's doing fireworks again, and he's all on board, and I believe he has sent his information in and his invoice in. So I think part of this is approving, this is the permit, and also approving, approving a payment to him?
Yes, it's on the paperwork.
Oh, it's on the paperwork, I don't have to be part of that. It's just there. So, can I give you this form right now?
Yes. I'm excited to be in the night.
Great, yeah, thank you.
Is there a consensus?
We can get by consensus, okay.
I think so.
Yep.
Everybody's good with it, right?
Yep.
There's nothing different from last year, and he said too that they're, they're not, we're not gonna have a fire truck there because if they had an emergency, well, everybody parked in there, they would just be stuck, but they will be at the fire station and ready in the event that anything happens. Not forbid, so.
Okay.
This banner request is the next thing on the list.
I thought we did that last week, but I, so I'm curious, what is, you just wanted an update?
Well, did you?
We received your info from Green Mountain Power.
Okay.
But I got it on Thursday afternoon, so I'm working on it. But it sounds like it's something they do routinely.
Well, it is, but let me, let me explain.
Thank you, yes.
So, Green Mountain Power, you can, they'll allow you to attach to their poles, but your attachment needs to be below the existing telecommunications cables.
Yes.
So you'll be the lowest point on the poles.
Yes.
With that said, you need to maintain 15 foot six, minimum clearance over the road.
Yes, actually V-trans is 16.6.
And there's no way on North or South Main Street that you'll ever maintain that.
It, it looks like those two poles there is, because when I look at the poles, it's above second story windows, which is over 16.6 on a house. So if you, if you say like it for the Munson House, which is close and the house across the street.
How wide is your banner? So it's the bottom of your banner and the lowest attachment?
Yeah, yeah, so we have an option for 24 or 30 inches, so it's not a super high banner.
Right.
So what we probably do is measure and double check, but, but I believe that it would still meet both, because, because V-trans actually requires a higher clearance, so we would make a shorter banner if we need to.
What's V-tel or V-trans?
V-trans is 16.6.
16.6, okay.
Yeah, it's, it's basically for trucks, right? So we, we understand all of that, and so if we meet V-tel standard, then we'll meet JMP standard, which is lower. The only thing we, we need to check with Green, do you work for Green Mountain Power?
No, I'm, I'm in the communication business, so I deal with them all the time.
Is that, I spoke with Austin Graphics and asked about attachments and safety, and one of the things he said is that most municipalities that do it attach a permanent guy wire at that lower level, and then, and then you attach, in addition to the ropes across the street, you attach, it's like a D-ring on grommets across the guy wire, which prevents any chance of it flipping. I mean, it would have wing slits and all of that, but it's sort of a double check, and it prevents it sliding back and forth across the.
And what are those called? D?
D-rings? It's like a caravan or, or a, you know, it's just a, and they're removable, so you take the sign down and you keep the D-rings attached to the signed grommets, and I have pictures. I have pictures from him. So it's a question, questions we have to ask still of Green Mountain Power.
Green Mountain Power, well, I don't believe.
Well, they do, they do another, I mean, I have pictures of Green Mountain Power utility poles with those guy wires.
Right, so what you need to do is the town would need to come in to, to do an agreement with Green Mountain Power.
Okay.
To be cut, and then we would have to per se license an attachment on the poles to make anything permanent.
Right, it's the wire itself.
Right, so you have to apply for the poles.
We would do all of that. We realize we may run out of time for this year. We understand that. It's okay. We feel like Longford Day as a town event, now that it's part of the town budget, it's part of the town calendar, and we have a town committee, we feel like it's worth pursuing even if it can't happen this year. Because if it takes a few months to get the permit and to get the work done and whatever, we can do it without having to rush printing and production, installation, you know, it's, it's tough now because everybody's short crude.
Right.
Right? It's the high season, so we get that. So what we're still seeking is permission to continue and pursue it, which we basically had at the last meeting, but we understand there are a lot of, you know, we're spending a lot of police.
Right.
We get that, we're not daunted, we, we also know that it may not be feasible for this year. Austin Graphics knows it may not be feasible for this year, you know, we've got all our dicks in our.
Well, even if you made your banners, couldn't you, you know?
Well, we may make the banners and use them elsewhere.
But this is permission, you could put them elsewhere on the side.
And that's a matter, exactly.
Yeah.
Yeah, that's not a problem. And, and we may do that, but, but I don't wanna do, so over the road banners are constructed differently than the banners we have that go on lawns and buildings, and they're more expensive. So we're never gonna be able to do an over the road banner, we don't wanna buy the more expensive banner in, when we could buy extra banners for around town, right? If we needed to do that, if we wanted some more visibility, whatnot, because we were like three sections of town, and we have four banners, and it doesn't quite cover all the visual places, right? So if we can do an over the road banner, then we'll order an over the road banner, but if we can't do an over the road banner, then we'll do other solutions. But as long as we continue to have your guys go ahead, we'll continue to, you know, jump through the hoops and run everybody's Green Mountain, V-trans, you know, it's like, but we get it, it's a lot, a lot to keep track of. And that's why we think it may not, it may not happen over, it may not physically happen this year, but if, if everybody says okay, and we, then they can do it in the fall, that's fine too, you know?
Right, so what would happen? This is, an agreement needs, with Green Mountain Power needs to be just a signed document saying that we agreed to their terms to make it a permanent attachment. Right now, there's an agreement for the flags?
Yep, okay.
Okay?
Yep.
So, those are permanent attachments, but they came to an agreement, and they're woven up where nobody's.
Yeah, so before you go through that effort, let's, we'll get it measured, okay? We'll get our high and low points measured. But there's, there's only two parallel poles on Main Street.
Right.
And they appear, those lowest wires appear to me, and I, I'm a designer, I work with space and height and all the time, so I have a pretty good idea that it should be high enough, not 100% positive, and as for the size of the banner, it's going to be between 10 and 15 feet, and the reason we haven't made that decision yet is to really measure the width of the road.
Right.
Okay, because we don't, we don't want it to be too small, we think 10 feet would probably work, but, but 15 feet may be more stable, because you have less rope and more sign.
You saw the.
But we also don't wanna impede visibility.
You saw Green Mountain Power specs?
Yep, I do.
As to have.
Yep, I saw all of it.
Okay.
We had already, V-trans has very similar specs, and they also have like, so that's the thing, we had to get your permission first, the next is Green Mountain Power, because V-trans won't even look at our permit until we have permission from Green Mountain Power.
Okay.
So they won't even consider our permit until we have permission from the utility pole owners. Now, they do say that's a fairly, that happens too, but you have to have everything in writing, so, so we know it's not going to be instant at this point.
Right.
And we're okay with that, you know? And we'll, we'll figure it out.
There is a, I'm not sure how that works, but when you apply for a pole, there is a fee, there is an annual fee to be attached to that pole, which is, mine, it's like $7 or something per pole, so it's, I do not have money, but it's.
It's like an eye hook that's gotta be attached, right? So two on each pole.
But they do consider that a permanent attachment, so.
Absolutely, and it is a permanent attachment, you know, and I'm guessing they wanna choose the hooks and such for the materials, so we understand that. Yeah, not a problem. We just, you know, we're certainly disappointed it'll take a little longer than, you know, we hoped, but on the other hand, we're in this for the long haul, so we're good.
I could measure that for you, it'll be a couple days, but I got stick, I can measure it for you.
Okay, you know, I, yeah, I mean, I have a 30 foot, 2 foot tape, and I can run it up and down, so.
Oh, I've got a regular utility measuring stick, so.
Sure.
That's what I do for a living.
If you do that, if you can do that, that would be great.
Yeah, it'll be a couple days, but.
At this point, it'll be a couple of days till I can really write, we took pictures, I have the pole numbers, so we're good with that, we have that.
So what I'll do is I'll measure the bottom attachment in center of the road.
Yes.
You'll have to be, your attachment will be a foot below that to the top of your attachment.
Yep.
Okay, so.
So the top of the sign.
And I'll let Sandy know, you know, where that attachment is.
Okay, you're welcome to help Longford Day too, I mean, if, if that helps, just email us both.
Yeah, I can, yeah.
Yeah, that would be great.
So I'll just, I'll stop here, like I said, the next couple days here in between raindrops.
Right. Snow possibly, you know, I'm sorry. Wow, that got some response. Thank you, that's really helpful.
Yeah, not a problem.
Awesome.
Are taking any comments?
And it was, so it was fire, it was fireworks.
No fires.
It was pole, there was one other thing I feel like, appointment.
Appointment.
Oh, yes! You've, you've received Jen's resignation, and we just would like approval for Monica to be.
Wasn't Monica just attending meetings, not a member of?
Was she maybe?
She was intended to be a member of the committee, but, but when you got her off the list, it wasn't the list that we had all, that we had written down.
Okay.
Sound motion?
I make a motion to appoint Monica Delorme to the Longford Day Committee.
I'll second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
I don't know if we're taking comments, I guess you're not.
It's a question, am I permitted a question?
I think so.
So, if there's a permanent.
We're having a long discussion here.
Well, it's a permanent attachment for this, does that mean that it will always fit older regulations for anybody else who wants a banner? Does it get used by other people then? What's the process for somebody else needing to, wanting to put up a banner?
I would, I was gonna actually suggest that it would be a blue for the town, so if other events did it, the process however would be getting permission from V-trans for each time, because they give you, you have to give them dates, you have to give them a window, they give you a maximum of 21 days to have it up and down.
Okay.
So, but once, I would imagine that once a town permit has been approved, and then the other question would be for the select board, how often they want such signs up?
So each time, their approval would have to come through the select board? Green Mountain would already, I guess have to have a permit, but would also, it should be pretty standardized for.
Once you do it, for a permanent attachment, that stuff.
And then it applies to the V-tran?
And then you would apply to V-trans, and they have a very easy permits, it's just a PDF that you fill out and.
All right, I just wanted to understand what this does for the future.
So it seems to me like if Rotary had a big thing and wanted to put something up, because I, I believe that the Rotary signs now, if, I mean, the last time I saw a sign up in Rotary was 20 years ago, and I'm guessing nobody was asking too much about heights and permits, to be honest, because when I look at the heights of between the two buildings, it doesn't look high enough.
Right.
Anymore, so, so but it would be.
Let's keep moving on here, we got a very long agenda tonight, so.
Thank you. Thank you for your time.
Thank you.
Our funding.
Running a little early, so nobody's here, yeah. I mean, we can help do Baptist, Julie's here with the Baptist and the.
And the rescue squad, they're walking.
Oh, good, well, there you go, yay. It's kind of a call, so.
Sorry. Hi guys, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Scott, I'm also here for the.
Perfect timing.
Is it, or I?
You're, you're on, you're on maybe?
I'm on.
You're on here?
Yeah.
Okay. Just right.
So, you make the topic.
The Ohio.
Okay, so just so you're aware, the quote on the generator that we got, we got an updated quote from Duchesne Electric this afternoon, because they got an actual quote from Dr. Gas.
Oh, okay.
So theirs went from 21 to down to 18.5.
Oh, okay.
So the difference is still $3,600 difference. So it's not the 6,300 that it was.
Still, still a difference.
It's still.
Between 18 and K and 20K too, right?
Right, yeah, it's still the, the 18K was a Generac, and the 20K was a Cummins. People like I just go, I'm comparable, comparable to doing that. I didn't know if there was any questions that you guys had for me. The stair chair, we looked at stair chairs, and for our purposes, a reconditioned stair chair is just fine.
So with this bigger generator, are you looking, are leaning toward making the rescue squad building like the town emergency center?
We're dis, we can discuss that, I honestly haven't discussed that, I know that came up with the, at one of the LEPC meetings, and, you know, I think, I don't wanna speak for the squad, I've talked to a couple of them, a couple members, and I think we're willing to maybe make it a, Sandy, correct me, a, I get the terms wrong, a, maybe a, we would consider a center, but not necessarily a shelter.
Right, like a command center.
Command, and we're, I think we're open to that, our, just one of our concerns that we have to talk about is, you know, we do have the indians are equipped with a lot of equipment and some non-narcotic drugs, so we have to somehow make sure that section is still secure. But, yeah, it's something that we'll definitely, we're willing to look at.
If it's a center and not a shelter, you're gonna have pre-approved people on it.
If, okay.
If it's a center, you'll have, those people will be pre-approved, so that shouldn't be a problem.
Right, if we're doing a center with hours from 8:00 AM to 8:00 PM or something like that, versus, right, staying on the.
Is it a dollar amount, Julie?
Well, I'll be honest, you know, we, we will, we will, we'll take full funding or we'll take partial funding. We're, we're willing to commit, you know, we think this project is, you know, important enough for us that, you know, we're willing to kick in whatever we have to kick in, so.
How long do you think that would take you? This amount though, looks like it's gonna be the difference between what, what the original request was and what it is now. How long do you think it would take you to be able to?
That, that funding would be, we have enough in reserve that we can make that funding available within a short period, I definitely, within the lead time of generators.
It's everyone's pleasure, I should probably abstain on anything on this, so, since one of them is my son.
Are you sure the AT is big enough to run that, the building?
Yes, that's, that's what we were told was.
At 80% or whatever they expect that.
Right. That's what, that's what was rec, that was what was recommended on the first one, on the first vote, and the second one agreed that that should be more than enough. Mainly because we have the, we do have the heat pumps that we're installing, but the heat pumps kind of offset the radio heat, which is pretty low, definitely low energy to run the radio heat, but that makes sense. Either winter or summer, we should, should have plenty.
So that's our pleasure here.
So you're looking for a total of?
Which ones are you looking at, Mark?
Well, just whatever, whatever, which ones they wanted to get, I presume they're gonna go with the.
If.
Lowest generator price.
Yes, and we were also going to go with the 2164 for the stair chair.
So if you do 2164 for the medical necessity quote, and then which generator are you gonna go with?
The 18500?
Number 14, no, right, the lowest price.
14,9.
So that, that totals 17,064 for those two items.
Seventeen?
Seventeen, 064.
064. Okay, and the amount approved is 9228?
That's a difference.
And let me affirm that we appreciate the 94, you know? I don't wanna sit here and turn down money either, so, you know how that goes, so.
I'll make the motion we funded at 9228, with the idea that if there's any left at the.
We reimburse it possible.
Maybe we can revisit it and get some extra money over to you.
You recommend, they're, they're already funded at 9228.
Yeah.
Right, that's what I mean, that's.
Yes.
So his motion is basically stay where we were.
Stay there?
Yeah, stay where we were.
It's hard for you to revisit.
Right.
To revisit and maybe be able to reimburse if there's extra money, money's at the end. I second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
So, just a question that I had was, Tam, going over the information that Sandy sent on the bid process, once we get these installed, we will send you all the installation information and the initial checks and all that.
Yeah.
Okay, if there's anything else you need from us, please let us know. Glad we do it with that deal. Appreciate you guys. Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay.
Here.
Thank you. Have a good one.
Okay, Phil's here, so we need the backup.
Oh, yes. Go back.
Road Commissioner's report.
Not quite sure where you wanna start, but there's multiple things. One is the, I think it's an O-13 or O-14 international truck, 13. What you're looking to do with that, I did a little research on used motors, new motors are just out of the question, and installation. are just out of the question, and installation of it and stuff. You've got 15, I think, into buying it and some miscellaneous money we put into it over the last year and a half or so, and it would be another minimum of 15 plus to put a used motor if you can find one. So it'd probably put you up around, you know, 3,000 range, which would be, or 30,000, excuse me, a little bit, quite a bit more than what it's worth. So my theory is it's up to the board, but to put a number on that, advertise it and see what we get with the plow and sander, we'll see plow sander, the way it sits.
Yeah, what, what do we get, Phil?
I talked, they said if you were lucky, you might get 7,500 for it. This was talking through one of the trucking companies up too. He said they are fairly still sought after even though it's got a bad motor, it's still people like those small trucks, so. I think anything that we gain or get for it is better than letting it sit there and deteriorate worse than what it's doing.
And did you say the amount you think is estimated around 75?
Yeah, for worth, yeah. No, I think advertise it and sit down and talk to whoever's interested on it. That's all we can do, put a price on it and say best reasonable offer. I guess the next one was paving. They've come up with East Wallingford, which would be part of Seward Hill, and I think it's Sugar Hill actually turns Ghosts' Farm, redoing that intersection in that corner. And they also talked about doing around the, I want to say dump, but the transfer station.
Yeah, Waldily.
Waldily, yes, thank you, because that's getting in rough shape.
Yeah.
And then there's some on Maple Street, I guess it's bad, and one other little street they wanted to look at. So I think that will probably use up the budget that we have for this year on that.
Do you want to set a date so we can have?
Yeah, any date, anytime to take a look at it.
Oh, we'll set a, set a date in a letter to send it off.
Yeah, it doesn't matter to me anyways, it's after the 16th of June.
Is there some way we could coordinate that with the Creek Road Bridge?
Yep, they're also going to look at that too. That's got to be, I was talking to Sandy on that, needs to go out to bids, so, but that should be a separate item.
Yeah.
Away from our actual town paving because it's already been granted.
Well, we don't have agreement yet, so.
Well, yeah, but it's going to be, the agreement was like, by the 1st of July, was it, they were promising it?
They can't, they said after the 1st of July, they'll get agreements out if the legislature funds this grant, so.
Oh, okay.
There's no work that can be done.
Well, we can get an estimate on it, I guess, and then, you know, hopefully we can tie it all together because it's just one less move they'll have to do if they can, you know, they're going to be right on Maple Street anyways.
Whether we can actually make it, coordinate or not, be another thing.
Yeah, I think there's some unknowns right now, so hopefully we could.
Maple Street retaining mall bridge, it will be finished this week if everything goes as planned. I think there's a check needed in there for the.
Just approved a pay order for it.
Okay, I thought, figured it was. It, it just saves the tax on it, running it through the town. I remember some, two or three other things too, pay order on the town stuff. Did they ever go and pick up, I think they picked up a pallet of salt they were supposed to Thursday or Friday.
Salt or chloride?
Or chloride, excuse me.
I don't know, did you talk to them about?
Yeah.
Where they get it at?
Carreras.
Carreras?
Yeah, because the Valleys didn't know when they were going to get it in. They were a little cheaper, but they didn't know when they were going to get in, and signed us something we needed, I think. And I don't think we used last year's budget, did we, on salt? I think, or chloride. Got salt on the line tonight. I just, I think it was left over from the previous year's budget, because it has gone up drastically from what it was.
Chloride.
I don't think we used the budget.
Yeah, that's, ending last year, yeah, we didn't spend anything on that.
It's actually for a pallet of it, it's actually 50, 50-pound bag, so it's more than a ton, but it was like, I think, 1,300 and something and change, but it's been around 700.
So we're going to have to, that's going to have to go up because we only budget 950.
Yeah, but there's a carryover, so we're covered for this year, it's the following year, I think we need to refocus on that, especially if they start doing any in water tank at all, spreading it that way.
I'm not sure we have that carryover anymore, do we, Julie?
I gave you the financial suit in.
Yeah, he's got it.
Yeah, I got it.
Looks like that amount is not.
Probably spent it on the trailer and the international. But, we're on that 325 right now, the budget's 408.
Hey, Phil?
Oh, I tried, there was something else Sandy and I talked about for lightning, I can't remember what it was.
Did the grants.
Oh, the weed whacker, the mulching head, that was approved?
No, we're in that right now with the ARPA stuff.
Okay, all right. I guess that's it then on my part.
So did you get the debris lower attached?
Yeah, they got all the plates, they haven't finished, they haven't taken them over to.
Should be all set to go.
Okay.
We approved that mulching head at the last meeting.
Yeah.
Well, I mean, we, we've got the, the actual agreement tonight for the, for the 28,000.
Yeah, that stuff needs to be taken over so they can put it together over to the.
We just have, in the ARPA funding, we just have the, the purchase order, you just have to authorize Bruce to sign it tonight, that's all. We didn't have the purchase order last night.
Do you want to look at that now, or?
Phil, on that mulching head, you don't have to take the sheet to them, do they cut it out here to put it on?
No, no, we'll put it on.
Okay, either the drain, your, uh.
Yeah.
So we don't, we just need consensus on that? Before you don't authorize it?
Make a motion for Bruce to sign it.
So make a motion, so I, I make a motion to approve the purchase order in the amount of $28,000 for Milton Cap for the mulching head.
Out of ARPA funds?
Out of ARPA funds, thank you.
All right. I guess, I guess that was.
And they, just so we can get this in the minutes, they suggested a screen for the front of that, and you said that's something this, this bro crew could.
Yeah, Steve can make up something for that.
What were they suggesting?
It was like 2200 or something.
No, it was like almost four.
Yeah, Steve can make something up for that. I think the pattern, the bolt assembly for bolting it on is there, you'll just have to make up something welded up of, I guess you'd call it a crash cage, so. I think so, I'm all set, thank you.
Thank you.
So we're back to ARPA funding here.
We're going to go up to the top?
Dave, are you, you're here to speak for the fire department?
Yes, I am. So, I think you have questions for me, or?
Yes, we, we tabled the, the other meeting, was a concern that whether or not you guys are going to be able to raise funding in the time that we have to spend the ARPA money.
And that's December of '26, you said? Is that correct, Sandy?
Yeah, we have to obligate it by the end of 2024, and once, and then it has to be spent by 20, the end of 2026.
Yeah, that would be no problem doing. As far as us raising money, yeah, well, we're just going to have to do it, and we're still trying to get other funding. We've been denied and then put back on for like FEMA money, and if that ends up coming through, it would be a whole different game. Right now, with what you're considering approving, it would get us to like looking at borrowing 100,000. But there's, we're trying to find some other sources of lending, and we have another source from one of the fire departments we're talking to that has some sort of a municipal grants available, but it, it never, nothing ever gets approved. It's just like, it's possible, it's possible, it's possible, but as far as, we're going to have to raise the money, and we were nervous that, we certainly weren't anticipating getting as big a number for ARPA money, and that is going to make it doable, without any doubt.
So would you be willing to commit to borrowing if you had to?
Yep.
The rest of the balance?
Yep.
If we committed that money?
Yes. If, can I just ask it like if, which I don't want to ask, but if we should happen to get other funding from some other places, do, do you want me to come back and update you, or is this just a?
Would that work?
Yeah. I mean, if you, if you, like if FEMA or one or the other, give you money, you expect it.
Yeah, if FEMA comes through with, you know, enough to buy it or something, then we would give the money back, but.
Do you have some sort of timeframe that FEMA's going to let you know by?
Well, that's why we haven't said anything, because at our April meeting, Karen Smith had been in contact with them, and they were told, we were told that they were working on 2021's approvals, and it's like, are you kidding me? And this is 2023, and we had been denied even applying for 2022, and we said, so, and then she came to the firm just the other day and said that it looks like they're going to let us know by the end of September, but I'm not putting that into math.
Right.
And I'm, and it's, there's no guarantee. They aren't saying, well, you're high on the list, or, no, nothing at all, so we're hoping, but.
Now, we have to commit this money by when, 2021?
The end of 2024, December 31st of 2024, so at the end of next year.
We could wait and see if they hear anything from FEMA in September. What do we think?
Well.
Let me ask you something, Dave, I don't know if this is true or not, I've heard your turn, your guys turnout gear, there's way out of date.
No, it's not way out of date by any means, no, we bought turnout gear new, probably 10 years ago. Yeah.
Is that, it's still in compliance, so 10-year-old stuff?
It's, we, we actually just bought four new ones a year ago to start updating, and we've got to keep updating, but we're just picking them off a few at a time, yeah.
I'm just thinking ahead that maybe if you ended up with a FEMA grant, we could award some money for PPE and stuff or something.
And, and the other thing, because we didn't anticipate any, when we first started looking for funding, we were running into a brick wall, and when we started, I mean, this, actually we started pricing a truck two years ago, a little more than two years ago, and we were just sticker price shock, and we actually have backed up and trimmed a lot of things out of the truck that we think we can live without, and if some funding would come through, we would definitely put things back into it to make it a better truck. So, yeah, that's why I didn't want to mention the FEMA thing, because it's like, if we could just get somebody somewhere to commit, and you guys did, which makes what we're looking at right now very doable, and if, if that was guaranteed, I mean, we would probably have a meeting and approve it and order it right off, because it's 18 months out before we get delivery. So, and immediately, they would want 120,000 down, just for the tab and chassis.
How much down?
120.
120.
So, yeah, if, if, so it's kind of like, well, if we have to wait till September, okay, and as the trucks took big jumps in prices to start, well, let me give you an instant, the first truck we priced was 260,000, which we thought was pretty high, and then we've trimmed things out of it, and right now that same truck is at 350.
Wow.
It just, it's crazy, I don't understand it, and then.
This is from two years ago, you're saying?
Yes, the pandemic just crazied it.
One other question, if we gave you the money and you ordered the truck, does that boot you out of eligibility for the FEMA grant? I know some grants.
Yeah.
I don't know.
Some grants you cannot order stuff, or have already bought stuff.
Well, yeah, probably you're right. I hadn't thought of it that way, but, yeah, I should check into that.
Yeah.
Yeah.
But you said you'd know by September?
Ask me.
That's what, that's what Karen.
Of 2026?
No, this year, who knows? It's supposed to be of this year, September, they would have 2023's applications done, because they had to be in middle of winter.
Right.
So, if you're okay with the wait, then we certainly are, but if you want to commit
to it.
Say we allocate the funds from what was discussed at the last meeting and let it just, then they have it, then it's allocated, so regardless of what happened to a FEMA, they at least have that amount of money. And if FEMA comes through and, you know, gives you enough of the truck, then, you know, we'll revisit it, but at least it allocated, may not be spent, but allocated.
I want to maybe just look into what the FEMA requirements are, because you may allocate it, it may have an issue.
I will do that. We will, we will not, we will not spend or commit to a truck until we find out.
Okay. So do we table this until you get that information and then we can bring it back?
Then we can.
Does that work for you?
Sure.
Hate to push you completely out of the way for.
Right, but you might be able to get information on that funding pretty quickly, like even in a meeting or two.
Just the record, just the requirements.
Yeah, just the requirements.
So how soon do you need to know? I guess is the question, is there a deadline?
End of '24, right?
Right.
Okay, okay.
Yep.
We got, we got a year and a half, so we can wait if we have to.
But if you get that information like pretty, pretty quickly, then we can, we'd be happy to hear about this again.
Okay, definitely will, probably nobody will give us an answer till the end of September, probably, but we'll just.
Doesn't hurt to ask, maybe you'll get an answer on that requirement sooner.
Karen Smith, and, yeah.
Yeah.
You should be able at least find out saying, if you do this, you're completely out.
Yeah.
I mean, just the general guidelines of.
Basically, we just want to allocate it now and then find out that it tipped you out of the FEMA.
Exactly.
And, yeah, I should.
If you can.
Because they ask you how much money you have to provide, well, actually they tell you what you would be required to provide when we did the application, it was actually a pretty low number, so maybe, I mean, even with your 100, it's not going to be the whole thing, so it, maybe it's something we could look at that way too.
Okay.
Actually, as much as you can.
Right. Right.
Exactly.
Yeah.
Okay.
Thank you very much.
Thank you for coming in.
Okay, so now.
I left here.
Baptist church?
Baptist church. So I think we all saw Julie Zumiya proving money for ARPA. I tried to do some research online. And I couldn't find a whole lot. I did find specifically the state of Virginia. They've passed their own laws that you cannot award ARPA money to any kind of religious organization. On the other hand, there was, I found two towns in Ohio that have awarded like $175,000 to different churches there.
It looks here from VLCT that if the church solely serves its religious congregation, it would not be, it would be wise to not grant fund. And it seems that the Baptist church is not really used as a community center. We have other churches in town that are.
Right.
But the Baptist church is not really in that capacity.
So it appears from the recommendations, or the guidelines from the VLCT.
I, I guess then I'm kind of shying away from funding it myself, but.
It was more commonly known as an area used by other groups and would be, but it's not.
Exactly.
It also states that to consider the political optics of separation of church and state.
Yeah.
Denial?
Yes.
Probably they should make a motion.
Make a motion to deny the funding.
A second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye, I guess. Opposed? And let's see, we go. Digitizing of land records.
There's something in here.
I thought we had approved that one.
Yeah, did we not approve that one?
I just need to sign the contract.
Oh, okay.
It's the same price, they're gonna, yeah, they're gonna hold the price for it.
Oh, okay.
So I just need to sign the contract?
Yeah, we just want to make a motion on those, just to sign.
I make, I second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
And that's ARPA.
Okay. Okay.
Let's see, committee purchase requests.
Is that next? Oh, took that. What committee's done?
Did I jump ahead?
Yeah.
Oh, I missed the energy committee, didn't I? Sorry. Sorry, Ken. So.
Yeah, let's do that.
Okay, the energy committee wants to discuss hiring a mechanical engineer to resist with their request for proposals for the town hall, energy efficiency projects.
Okay.
You having problems coming up with stuff, or?
No, let me give you a little background. We decided to break it into three separate contracts. With the first one being insulation, second one being heat pumps, and third one, if it happens, replacement of the existing heating system. I pretty well have both of the narratives of the first two contracts done, but I need to run them by the committee. We meet tomorrow night, so hopefully they'll be able to get that information back to me. And we'll be able to have a bid package ready for you folks by the end of, was it June, by the end of June. Hopefully, to go up to bid before the end of July. I'm anticipating that three months is plenty for the insulation and probably the same for the heat pumps.
No. When we discussed this, the priority was insulation, a new furnace, boiler. And the heat pumps was a third, and that was optional.
Oh, the heat pump?
We did not commit to the heat pumps.
Okay, so then, then we're stymied until we have somebody evaluating how to go with the existing heating system. Because there are a couple of known deficiencies that in place, what's in place now would not meet code because of the length of the smoke pipe that runs.
Who told you that? I talked to a master plumber and he said there's no such thing as that.
Well, according to engineers, that there is a code that's related to that. So, I mean, that's why we need to know for sure. A lot of plumbers will say a lot of things, but the concept. Hey, David, we just, we just started.
You're done?
No, not yet, just started.
All right.
What do I say? Yeah, the, there's no one in our committee that feels confident in doing the same thing that we're doing with the insulation or the heat pumps. So we need, we need some professional help with that.
Do we know what the cost of hiring would be?
They estimated $4,000.
Preliminary estimate of $4,000.
Who, who did you ask?
They asked.
Dan Dupres.
Yeah.
Dan Dupres, he's the only horse in town from July.
In Rutland?
He's a mechanical engineer.
Is that with Otter Creek?
Say what?
With Otter Creek?
No, that's, no, Otter Creek is civil engineer. He's mechanical.
Dan who?
Dupres.
How do you spell?
What about the guy that was on the building committee?
I don't.
He never got on the building committee, but it was another. Jay suggested that he join the building committee, but he declined because he was busy with other things.
There was a engineer on the building committee, was it Farrar or something like that?
I don't know if he's a mechanical engineer or a civil engineer. One of the biggest issues is that the Department of Fire Safety is gonna require a permit for doing work on town hall. And they require stamped drawings. And a contractor can't do stamped drawings.
Anthony Perri, that's his name.
Yeah, so, I mean, I don't know him, but that single issue right there is kind of critical.
Can you spell the last name of Dan? Dan's last name is?
Dupres, I believe it's D-U-P-R-A-S.
D-R-A-S, Dupres.
And I don't, I.
In Rutland-based?
Mm-hmm. Yeah, I wish I knew the, the name of his company, but.
And for that $4,000 estimate, will he supply stamped drawings?
Say again?
For that $4,000, is he gonna provide us with stamped drawings?
Yes.
Yeah, and bid documents, the whole nine yards. Evaluate what's in place. One option that was thrown out just in the preliminaries is as a result of doing the air sealing and insulating in the basement, it may very well be that we don't need to replace what's in, what in kind, that's the size of the burner, that's in kind. More than likely, we can reduce it. And the other concept that was introduced to have a lead lag situation, where you have two units that one serves as the lead pump and the other one, not the pump, of the heater, and there is a lag, thereby extending the life of both of the units. And in theory, the heater's not gonna work near as hard as it does now because the heat pumps are gonna do the lion's share of the comfort, primarily for this room, this floor.
Really, did you get heat pumps?
Assuming you get heat pumps. Yes.
Assuming.
The insulation includes painting, just chum too?
No, no, it does not. No, we, no, we decided to keep that separate.
Yeah, I thought that was.
No, that was supposed to be part of.
Window ceiling and trims painting.
No, no, we.
We had a, if I remember the conversation that we had together with you folks at a meeting outside of the select board, we were discussing the fact that insulation contractor did not feel comfortable with doing painting and that painting should be a separate bid item.
My take from that conversation was that they could find somebody to sub it out for them.
Yeah. Because we're gonna do like this window, ceiling the windows and painting at the same time.
Yeah, that's a major part of the ears. That's the biggest part of the air sealing for the whole building. That and fixing that hole that's the clock tower. We could, Sandy, we could very easily include that in as part of the air sealing.
Yeah.
But not the painting. That's a different creature. Because the painting would include high work, right? Doing everything, talking about doing everything.
We'll have to. We'll have to revisit that, I guess. You don't think another contractor could sub that out to a painting firm as part of their?
I, I don't know, it's unusual, but I mean, it can be done, I'm sure. We could incorporate it into it. It's just outside the box of what, you know, contractors that I have in mind for this, that type of work don't normally do that kind of thing.
Back to the mechanical engineer here. Sounds like we really don't have a choice. And then we've got to hire one. If we're gonna redo the furnace, the boiler.
Yeah.
Read.
Read, I think, yeah, we gotta go.
Read.
So how will we do that? Just have Dan get in touch, or?
I guess we can.
Can you get in touch with Dan and have?
Right. Should we?
We have to go out to bid, right?
Is it worth trying to get bids from a couple of different people? I don't know if there's anybody else local.
What did you decide? What did you decide?
That we're gonna give them permission to hire a mechanical engineer at this point.
Okay.
Yeah.
The painting is still an outstanding issue.
Yeah.
Now, we'll have to, we'll have to bid, but three bids, right?
Yeah.
Just give me a, yeah, give me a prices for.
Yeah, we can't just hire him. With the town purchasing policy.
How many estimates do you need?
Three bids.
Okay.
One, three, yellow pages.
I hope, I hope it's three there.
I think he's a structural and civil, so that's not gonna help you.
Well, unless they have a mechanical in-house, I mean, there may be some of them.
He works for Otter Creek.
He does most of, Otter Creek, to the best of my knowledge, Otter Creek doesn't have a mechanical onboard. They rely on Dan to do, to do their work.
Okay.
So, yeah, we have to look at, at the other engineering firms to see if they have in-house mechanical. And with the painting, I mean, I guess we can incorporate it into the insulation. It's, it's unusual, but.
Let's try and just see what happens. If everybody comes back and screams no.
Yeah.
All they gotta do is hire a contractor to come in after the insulation and paint, so.
Well, but I already have a pretty good estimate from, I've had a couple of different contractors to estimates on what it's gonna cost to do the air sealing. I don't have any such creature for the painting. Do you have any preliminary?
Yeah, yeah, we've got two or three names that run due to painting.
Okay.
So I can just send you that.
Okay.
Try and see what happens.
Sure.
Okay. Thank you, guys.
Thank you.
We got our merchant orders. Off we go.
Now we're back to the committee.
So just on your timeframe, just keep in mind, we're probably not going to have an early meeting in July. It's not definite, but we'll probably discuss that in June, June 16th. I'm not gonna be here, so it may just be one meeting in July. Keep in mind when you're putting these things in there.
Okay, so that's gonna push us back to?
Well, we have a meeting July, June 19th.
So if we can find.
And then July 17th. It's the first meeting in, we, we seldom have a meeting, a first meeting in July anyways. It's July 3rd. We don't usually only have one meeting in July.
So if we have our packet, two packages ready for you at that date, we can go out to bid or advertise and then go out to bid sometime in July, August, early August? I would, I'm leery to get, push the insulation back when it starts to get cold because I'm concerned about curing of the foam. I know there's been more than one problem with cure of foam not being properly cured because of the temperature. And I would really like to avoid that, if possible. I'm sure you would like to. Well, we'll just do the best we can.
Expedite it as much as we can and.
Okay.
If we have to, we'll do it next spring or something, but I prefer not to.
Yeah.
Okay.
We'll get on our horse.
Excellent, thank you.
You guys. You guys.
Pretty good area. So somebody up here up.
So, uh, I guess the rec committee has about $3,622 left to spend on the 22, 23 budget. So we have some things we'd like to talk about. So, we wanna talk about water at the rec field, okay? We had a plumber determine where the water line runs going to the old spigot. It runs right next to that, that concession shack building there. So, we had an estimate to expose the pipe from Kevin Ruane. And that was what, 400?
600.
Oh, 600, okay. And then, we had two plumbers give us estimates for, you know, cutting a pipe, put an elbow in, bringing it into the shack with an isolation valve, coming out with a spring-loaded spigot so it automatically shut off. You know, twist it, and then it automatically closes. And, uh, one estimate was 1,200 from Lozen and one was 1,622 or something from Bill Jones.
So my question is this, there's been thoughts in the past that there's a break in that pipe? Am I correct on that?
Yeah.
And that if we did this work, might end up making water through a broken pipe?
So I talked to Chris Hayes about this before we seriously looked into it. And he said that the break is near the old line, like where that spigot comes out next to the basketball court.
So the break is by the basketball court?
Yeah, so that part will be cut off and abandoned.
And that is part of the 600?
Yeah.
Am I correct in that?
Yeah.
So what you would do is you cut out the break?
No, not cut it out, it'd be abandoned completely.
It would be-
He had some fancy term for it, like abandoned in place, or I don't know, some acronym.
Basically, cutting it right near the, the existing-
So the water wouldn't run through the break?
No. No, it would be rerouted from the cut into the building and then the spigot had it. And the part that's in the building would have an isolation valve.
Okay.
So that it could be shut off from the inside.
Okay.
It'd also have to have a water meter, which would have to be removed every year because there's no heat in the building.
What's the cost of that?
So we would turn the water off in the winter, yeah.
Yes, but you still have to remove the meter in an unheated building.
I mean, Chris Hayes said that he would supply the meter. He didn't mention like that it would have to be removed, but-
Maybe you could just ask him about-
Yeah, we can ask him.
I've asked him, I've talked to him about this before. We've been through this multiple times and you guys just keep coming back to it.
Right, it keeps getting tabled and tabled.
Doesn't get cabled, it's get, it was refused by the previous boards.
On what day? I reread all the minutes, I didn't see that it was ever refused. It's been tabled a number of times. It first came through like three years ago as a request from Wallingford Day to turn on the water for that day. Yeah, it's been round and round and round.
And that was for using the spigot, not?
No.
There's a-
I wondered if we were using the spigot at the program.
This discussion about digging up the line, running it into the building.
But in the recent questionnaire, you know, we asked about water being turned on. 60% of people replied that they would like water turned on and another like 20% said maybe. So it's a pretty small minority that said no, that they don't want water turned on. A lot of people commented on that in addition, like, no brainer, of course we should have water at the park, kids need water, hot out, lots of activities.
Most people don't realize though that it'll be an ongoing expense and a maintenance issue on this every, every year. In the past, the water, the fire district ran water into the park at that spigot that was next to the basketball court. It was constantly being vandalized. People would turn it on, jam it, break the valve, and there'd be water running all over. The potential, and he finally got fed up with it and they shut the water off. Now to put water back, you're gonna have to go through the expense of putting a line in, putting a meter in. You're still gonna have the issue of people vandalizing the faucet. You're gonna have the ongoing cost of water bill down there. You're gonna have to put in, pay to have the meter installed in the spring, take it back out in the fall. Very few parks around this area have water at them. I think this is just a expensive and needless request.
I, I think I'd like to know how much that annual recurring cost would be?
Yeah.
Like, if, like, unfortunately, the point of vandalism, I mean, we do have vandalism down at that park of things that are already standing there. Is there any way to get a spigot that is, that you can't vandalize? I mean, do you know-
Well, that's what this quote was for, was for, I mean, I don't know the exact term, what he called it, but I printed out the email.
I've got this somewhere.
That's what we asked for, was a vandal proof.
Okay.
Um, I suppose anything can be vandalized. Tamper-proof outdoor spigot.
Maybe we, if we go back to these, the plumbers and Lozen and Bill Jones and ask about this recurring meter thing?
We can, but, I mean, the issue is that this money, this money that's remaining needs to be spent by the end of June or it's gonna go away. So this is a unique opportunity to get something done that, you know, people in this community want and have wanted for a long time. I think it's important to the sports teams that, you know, recreate down there and other people that recreate down there. Aside from Bruce, I've heard very few people not support this interest in water at the park. And I think, you know, Chris said that he would put the meter on there at no cost, the water district. He said that he would be there during construction to make sure it was done right. He supported this, I, you know, I ran this all by him, I texted him, I took pictures, I told him the quotes that we had received, I've been in communication with him.
So we have to spend this money by the end of June? Is that correct?
Yeah.
You don't have to spend it.
We don't have to spend it, right? But the money will go away at the end of June.
It will go, it will go away at the end of June.
So the money that has been allocated-
It doesn't go away, it goes back into the general fund and then if there's a surplus, it helps cut it down on our taxes next year. It doesn't go away.
Okay.
It will go away from rec. Which it was burged for.
Right. What do we?
So usually, aren't those tamper-proof faucets? The kind that you need a, carry a wrench to turn them on?
So they have those, but no, what we were talking about was like the ones that are at the state park that just spring-loaded, closed. You know, the state park uses them at all of their faucets.
So if somebody takes a hammer and knocks the faucet off the side of the building, they're going to-
I mean, I'm sure it'll be welded, but, yeah, I guess you could take a hammer to anything down there and break it.
Well, I'm just, the way vandalism has gone down there. If they can't pull it off the next time down, they'll get something bigger.
Yeah, and there will be a shut-off valve inside the building. So that was really important in the quote that we received because we wanted to be able to turn the water off ourselves without having to contact the water district. Let's say there is vandalism and we wanna shut it off, you know, one day, we can just shut it off.
Hey, so that's gonna have to be drained every winter.
Right.
We're gonna have a way to, you'll have to shut it off at the street fire district.
Right. Which is what they used to do every year, they would shut it off and shut it back, turn it back on, yeah.
But it won't drain out.
Gonna say-
Unless you have a frost free and it won't drain back.
But even with a frost free, it's still gonna, cause the building's not heated.
Right.
But if they run it through a frost free to turn it on inside the building and then at the end of the year shut the frost free off, it'll drain back everything in the building through the frost free and it won't freeze.
Oh, interesting.
But it'd have to go through something that's buried down five feet.
He said that it used to be like a one-way valve, like it needs to- I can, I printed out the email that Chris Hayes sent.
You're talking one, like one of the hydrants, yard hydrant.
Yeah, so it drains back.
Right.
After you plumb down the yard hydrant, into this-
Needs to be a one-way valve.
It'd be six feet, or five, six feet deep and under the-
Something you can disconnect and drain, that's all, yeah.
Well, we know where Bruce stands on this, what do other people think on this?
I think it's something that, as long as it's not gonna help. If it's built correctly, like what, what-
They do make a weeper valve, they could put a corporation where you junction your pipe together, then you just turn off with a T wrench and it'll drain back there to that way. You could turn it on and off.
I am worried about the other one or something.
They were gonna put a curb stop in right there, too.
Yeah, they make weeper drains that'll drain backwards.
What's, what's the, what do you, I'm not familiar with how the water works, what's the, thinking that'll cost a year for water bill?
It'll depend, cordially, they take a meter reading and you pay so much a gallon for the water.
Right.
Now, if somebody proceeds to vandalize the thing, you pump 20,000 gallons of water out and the town's gonna have to pay for 20,000 gallons of water going through that meter. I mean, that's, that's why the prudential committee disconnected the original one that was there is because they go down and find thousands of gallons of water had been-
Dumped on the ground.
And the prudential committee decided that they weren't gonna pay for that water anymore.
Right. There is a valve that you can get that, after a certain amount of water flow through, will shut itself off, right? But now we're talking, now we're getting expensive, so-
I mean, nowadays, everybody brings a water bottle.
I mean, I think that 60% of people in town said yes for a reason, I mean, they wanted water at the park.
It wasn't 60% of people in town, it was 60% of your survey.
Right. 60% of the people that chose to respond said yes, and-
I'm sure you favored-
I favored? I, not that I favor Bruce, enlighten me.
I'm sure you had every one of your friends receive to fill one out.
Everybody had equal opportunity.
Everybody had equal opportunity, it was posted on the town webpage, it was posted on- Yeah, this is not my friends' opinions.
Right. So what do we think?
My concern that just talking and making it so it can be drained, usable, not waste water-
Yes.
Is gonna be way over your estimate. Just-
Well, I think these guys like Bill Lozen, they know what it needs to be, I mean, they, you know, they've been doing it for years.
And did they take all this into account, the, the, you know, what would happen if it was vandalized, if it was broken?
Well, yeah, if it's vandalized, you're gonna waste some water for sure.
But for this price, are we gonna get a shut-off?
I mean- Yes.
Do they give you written estimates? Do you have written estimates?
I mean, I have emails back and forth, they're not like proposals, but, yes. And I made it clear we needed a shut-off valve and we needed a tamper-proof proof spigot.
And it sounds like, do we need something where, where the pipe doesn't freeze where it is, where the water runs back? We need that as well?
You need to get it, you get it four or five feet below the ground.
It will be, I mean, it is five or six feet down that.
If they put a curb stop in that drains, that would work.
So there will be a curb stop in the ground or in the, I don't know. I mean, you can read what they told me, but there's a curb stop, there's a cutoff in the, in the shed and then there's a tamper-proof spigot on the outside.
Well, if we have a way, if we have a way to prevent the, for the water to shut off, if it's vandalized, if we have a tamper-proof faucet, that's about all you can do when it comes to vandalism. I just wanna make sure that we aren't losing 20,000 gallons of water in the field.
There's no way to guarantee that, you know, like, if somebody installs the pipe in half or something and it goes running for, you know, for a long time before somebody shuts that isolation valve.
I don't think somebody's gonna go through the fields trying, trying to hit like-
I'm just saying, I don't see how we can guarantee-
Right, but if we're taking, if we're taking reasonable measures to prevent considerable damage from happening.
Can you set that up with a valve at the curb or somewhere in that line deep that you turn on with a T? So when the water, so-
That's part of it, yeah.
That's a curb stop.
Well, okay.
Oh, okay.
There is already a curb stop.
All right, so when you put a curb stop in, you shut the water off when there's nobody there that's not being used. If you've got an event or something going on, you could turn the water back on. That would, that would stop the vandalism, the stop of the waste of the water. Everybody, every time they're down, they may not have water, but your big events, your-
Baseball.
Your baseball, you start without water because they could go into the shed, get the T, turn it on, and then they have water.
There just wouldn't be water, like, say, if nothing's going on at the field, the water might not be on, but-
I mean, I think that that would, I, I mean, I would ask that that be like the backup, like that we hope for the best and make it as vandal-proof as possible. And then if there's an issue, that then the town can decide to turn it off in the shed and only authorize it to be turned on for events. But, you know, I think if we do everything we can to make it as vandal-proof as possible, and we also have other ideas for trying to make the place more secure down there. That's another item on our agenda-
Okay.
For purchase, but, you know, I agree that vandalism is, could be a problem and that's why we wanna make sure that the town has the ability to have the water shut off in the building. So that if it becomes an issue, you can just turn it off.
The meters gotta be on the outside of the building?
That would have to be on the inside.
That's it, 'cause I'd be gone in a couple minutes.
Right, so the meter's on the inside, right?
Yeah, the meter will be on the inside.
Okay.
Well, let's bring this to the head here.
Okay.
If I'm opposed to it.
Okay, yep. I'm gonna make a motion that we approve a water, the water proposal, with the caveat that for the first year, we only use it for main events, for events that happen, that the water won't be on all the time, but that we're going to let it be on when the field is being used.
You have a second?
At the dollar, so I'm gonna go for a dollar amount, your dollar amount was $1,800?
Yeah, but we wanted to add a contingency on that, just in case.
What's a contingency?
A contingency is for like, if things end up costing more than you think they're going to because there's some unknowns.
So what-
So we have, what is it, remaining 3,800, so we were hoping for 2,000.
We already quoted $2,200.
Yeah, let's go more, we need more than 2,000, I think.
All right.
So are we gonna go for 22?
Let's go 23.
So for 22-
Cause one of the bids was higher than the other one, too, and it's gonna be a matter of who could do it.
For 2,300, correct? Is that reasonable?
Yes.
Okay. So my motion is for water down at the field that is used just for main events, for now, um, for the cost of 2,300.
Who's in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
I don't know, I close it.
You second that, Carol?
Okay.
I just don't need it a lot to bid.
Yes, this would need to get- Yes, this would need to get the three bids, right?
Three bids.
Three bids?
Does it? Because I was just reading the purchasing policy and it says if you spend over $1,500, it has to get three bids.
You spend $23,000.
Spending $23,000.
But with two different contractors.
Doesn't matter.
Really?
I think because...
Because one is an excavator and one is the plumber.
I think it's for the same project, so it would...
It's what we did before, it's the same project.
Right? Yeah, because it's the same project.
Oh, right.
Okay.
It says minimum two bids, preferably three.
Okay.
That's between $1,500 and $5,000.
So we'd like to get the three bids.
Yeah, but we can get at least two.
Yeah, I mean, honestly, it's hard to get bids these days from contractors, like there's just not that many of them. A lot of them don't call back.
Okay, another one. We flipped in the security cameras and there's some you can get with no Wi-Fi so that, you know, there won't be that reoccurring Wi-Fi bill every month. These have local storage of like one terabyte, which is enough to store 24/7 video for at least a week, okay? And it can be a system with, you know, where you store a week, so it would just continually be erasing and adding. So, you know, that would allow you a week's time, if there's vandalism, to go back and look at the data. And, you know, I feel like for most vandalism, you're gonna catch it in that window of time. And we can get this kind of system for between 500 and 700. It'd be nice to budget 1,000, but because of contingencies, but...
And what contingencies are you thinking?
Be the same thing like if...
Are you talking like installation fees or...
Yeah, like things that we don't know, like, you know, running wire that ends up being harder than we anticipate or...
Kind of my dad, Brian Ferguson couldn't be here tonight, but he has some experience with security systems and he offered to install, help, we all offered to install it, but he's the one who would know how to do it. We'll be there like, you know, hold the ladder. But he offered to install it.
He's done this before?
Yes.
These have night vision capability, you know, they're vandal-proof. Well, you know, like if somebody takes a sledgehammer to it, it's probably not plastic, but they're designed to be, they're called vandal-proof, you know.
What is the area that it covers?
Yes.
So you can have, this, one system had four cameras, I think one had two, but so they kind of can pan and if they see motion, they'll go towards the motion.
Do you know how, what distance it would cover, how much of the field we could get?
Yeah, I think most of them are kinda good to like 500 feet.
I printed out the information. If you guys wanna like look through it.
Yeah, there's several here and they're all maybe a little different, but yeah.
One of the things that Brian mentioned that is a limiting factor with these no Wi-Fi systems is that you're limited in the winter because the functionality and the longevity of the equipment can be decreased by the really cold temperatures. So it might not function as well in the winter, but I feel like vandalism isn't as big of an issue in the winter, so we could play that by ear, whether we wanna just not use it.
It seems like the vandalism is less in the winter than it is during the good weather?
You gotta have power to it.
Yes.
Which good.
What kind of power does it need?
Just the building power would need to be left on year round, which, that's one other thing that, we don't need to discuss that today, but we might as well since you brought it up, was that a couple of months ago, we were down at the field looking at some projects that needed to be done and some of the landowners who live in that area were saying that because the electricity was turned off in the winter, that the motion sensor lights weren't coming on and that they felt like that, you know, was increasing the, you know, the vandalism because people weren't deterred by lights being on and, I mean, some people who live across the street were saying they could hear like voices over there, like in the big dark, like people were over there, you know, it could start at four o'clock, so...
How much is the bill from the building for electricity? Do we know?
I don't know.
So I think there's multiple benefits to like leaving the electricity on.
Do we know what the bill is in the summer for the...
I figured that now.
Oh, okay, sure.
It's not an agenda, I know, we got a long agenda.
Sorry, yes.
We're already way over.
No problem.
Yeah. I'm sure it's not much.
So what do we think about now with the four cameras? Is that for the $500 or $700 figure?
It's on sale for $3.49, I think. I think this one, $5.79.
$5.79.
And that's four cameras?
Yeah.
And so you're thinking if you ask for a thousand...
Yeah.
That it would cover. We've talked about...
I don't think that will if you get a run power.
Okay.
No, the power's already there, we just plug it in. What do you mean if we have to run power?
You put four, all four cameras on the concession stand or whatever?
Yeah, just a plug.
Where do you think, he's asking where are you gonna put your cameras?
Yes.
Yeah, they're all gonna go on this concession stand and it will link to the data hub will be in the concession stand.
So it would be four different angles off of...
Four different cameras on the concession stand.
With 500 feet coverage from each camera.
Yes, so we could put it in different directions, but they would all have to be into the concession stand and plugged in there because that's where the data hub would be, which is basically like a recorder, you know? It's gonna record all the information.
And have it in one central location.
And it will date and timestamp an incident, so picture, every picture will have like a date and timestamp so that if something happens, we know it happened on Tuesday, somebody will have to physically go down there and look through the pictures.
Right, okay. So what do we think?
That isn't very high. Again, the vandalism.
But hopefully you might get a picture of who's about to smash it with a hammer or anything.
We looked at doing this before previously too and we had some discussions with the sheriff and basically they said 90% of the time, the camera doesn't help them one bit with a picture. They really didn't recommend at that time that we do it.
I'm hoping that it would, like if you put up signs saying like monitored by video surveillance, that it would deter some vandalism. And really, we're spending a tremendous amount of money on vandalism, I mean, just being Steve.
So what do we think? Do we think this would be a good use, Mark?
I'm afraid that putting cameras on the concession stand, they're gonna get knocked off just for general prisons. They need to be up higher or somewhere that it can't be reached and you have to try to throw rocks at them or something, but I'm just afraid that they're gonna get knocked off and you're gonna be, you know, kinda throwing your money out the window because you'll be replacing cameras after you put them there. I mean...
Well, I mean, we could put a pole, I mean, we could make them higher with added something, but it's gonna cost, you know?
Right.
And...
Right, and it might not even be all that sturdy, it might be easier to knock down that pole if they're attached to it.
It's a little more trouble for the vandal, that's all, you know, like, but, you know, the camera might catch them in the act. I mean, it's just something we wanna discuss.
Right.
It's, you know, there's vandalism happening and it's just a suggestion.
Yep. And it's appreciated because it would be great to get this vandalism problem under some control. I'm just not sure.
I'm just wondering like what other suggestions are there to get the vandalism under control other than this? Like it might not be perfect, but it's an option. Like what other options do we have?
We cut the budget for sheriffs, we didn't cut it, we didn't increase it, like we talked.
Yeah, because we don't have the money for it and this fits into you.
We increased it some.
Right, but not a factor. I think if we, yes, there is vandalism, this is a step towards trying to...
And it's what you brought up. I mean, the vandalism costs us money too, so if there's anything we can do to prevent it would help.
Would you like to...
And also at the same time, if we stop doing everything because we're afraid it'll be vandalized, then why do we have anything?
Would you like to make a motion?
Now, one thing I'll point out is if somebody damages a camera, you're not losing a thousand dollars right there, you know, because the debt, the storage unit for the data is inside the building, it's not gonna be damaged. So, you know, you're gonna maybe replace the camera, which may be like 100 bucks or something of the whole cost. So it's not like you're losing the whole investment.
Is that $750 gonna give you the unit inside as well as the cameras? Because when we priced this before...
Yeah, they've come down so much.
It's like the hard drive.
Yeah, they've come down so much in price over the past couple of years. You can get a home camera now for like literally $30 and links to your phone, you can see everything at your front door. That's how a lot of people see bears.
So, just so you have how much left to spend?
They're asking for a thousand for this.
No, but how much do you, how much do you have left?
Thirty-eight.
And so I got the price...
Thirty-six, twenty-two.
Right, and I, with $2,300 off...
Is that included the light jackets you've ordered, Sandy?
It does, yes.
With the amount that I took away the $2,300, I got $1320 left that they haven't spent yet this year.
Right, but if we put a thousand in, what is, what is your highest priority? You've got, you've got $5,200 and you don't have $5,200. So is the cameras your priority or is clay or paint stand?
Right, that's right.
Because you're gonna be...
Yeah, that's right.
Like one more day.
Yeah.
You're gonna be out of money.
Right, we're out of money. Right, so we realize that. So cameras would be your second, not the clay or the concession stand for painting.
That might be a building fund item later down the, I mean, it's, it's an ongoing, it's a problem. The bricks out there are absorbing water and freezing and deteriorating, so they need to be sealed if you wanna keep that building in good shape. So that, that's something that maybe the building fund might be considered for.
Matt can go through that.
All right.
Because, you know, why put security cameras on a building if it's gonna...
Yeah, exactly, if it's gonna...
Good pictures of the building, Paul.
Yeah, it sinks into the ground.
This is at the park though, we're talking...
Different building.
Oh, different building, that's right.
Different concession stand, so we've got two now, so...
All right.
Okay, folks, let's make a decision here and move on.
I'll make a motion for a thousand for the cameras.
Who's in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Now.
Just three, one?
Yep.
Yeah.
I would suggest you stop there because I really don't think you're gonna be able to put that water in for $2,600 or $2,200. I think you're gonna need a little more yet, but...
Okay. All right.
The other thing was, I have maybe one load of clay for the ball field, but we...
You spent your money.
Forget that, okay. We don't have any clay there.
And I would not agree to buying clay to leave and run. So...
So we're not gonna do the building either, okay?
Well, I was thinking it needs to be something we need to do, but I was hoping maybe we could bring it up later for, it's a building fund.
Okay. So that would be for this evening?
It would be coming out of the red budget.
Right, okay.
I mean, that seems like a really low price to do something that was preventing the building from further deteriorating, but we'll leave that for another day.
Okay.
All right, thank you for your time.
Thank you. Okay.
Pointments, conservation and DRP. So, a couple of things, Rodney Ward did not respond to the letter asking for his, whether he wanted to stay on the conservation committee or resign. Sandy's asking, do we wanna post this seat as a vacancy?
Is that what we would normally do if we didn't get a response?
I believe we gave him a date to respond by or...
And he hasn't responded. And I would think Sandy could then post it, post the vacancy, correct?
Yes.
Okay.
Everybody's good with that.
Very.
And Joyce Parvias has admitted her name as a development review board alternate.
And do we have room for an alternate right now on the board?
Yes, there's an opening.
I don't see a reason to deny that.
No.
By consensus, of course.
By consensus.
Okay.
She knows what she's doing.
Okay. Let's see this, it's something on this.
So Julie submitted a memo, a request to change the plans from number three to number two. It would increase the maximum benefits per employee from $750 to $1,500 annually. The increase to the town would be $217.68 for all the next year.
Okay.
And that's everybody, all employees.
Oh, really?
I think we could manage that.
I think to double it for that small amount of money, I think that, yes.
The consensus?
Yes.
Remember if people had come out of work due to dental pain and issues, it's worth it?
Yeah.
Unlicensed dogs. So, so dogs need to be registered annually by April 1st. Town clerk's office has contacted dog owners to remind them to register their pets. We have a list of folks that haven't. And normally, the board votes to send out a letter.
To remind them to register or have a penalty?
Yeah, receive a ticket, municipal ticket.
You've done it before.
It's everyone's pleasure on that.
I would say let's do it again.
By consensus.
What do we think?
Yeah.
Okay.
So the sidewalk committee has chosen the BHP consultants had a cost of $77,076 for design services. BHP submitted initial estimate, that was like $99,000.
Yes.
And after negotiation, some they managed to reduce it by $22,000, so... Basically, that's just information for you folks.
Yeah, we need, we need, just get it in the minutes that you're gonna approve hiring them. Somebody wanted us to get it in the minute.
So do we need a motion?
Yeah.
Okay.
Then they, then she, she's told them it looks like you're going to approve hiring them and then they'll, they'll present you with an agreement at an upcoming meeting, but she wants your approval to go ahead and hire them.
Make a motion as a committee member, that's okay? Okay, I make a motion that we approve BHP consultants, $77,076 for design services.
For the sidewalk project?
For the sidewalk project.
On School Street.
On School Street, sorry. Wait.
Who's in favor?
Aye.
All right. Let's see. Let's see. Select board comments or concerns. Other business, Elfin Lake will open June seventeenth.
Yep.
Sandy's applied for grants and aid funding for FY twenty-four, and eighteen thousand dollars was approved to upgrade some road segments here in town.
Excellent.
That's it on our other business.
Like, so I the fire district had the water issue here on Tap Terrace.
Yeah.
And they cut into the pavement. We didn't get a made it fill out the permit form or pay the fee
For a while.
for cutting the pavement.
Didn't know there was one.
Yeah. Yeah.
We're repairing a water leak? When does that come about?
Well many years ago.
Really?
I get, I actually-
We do it all the time.
I actually sent-
Never heard of it.
I actually sent every year the fire district this permit form for them to sign up on it. It's a three hundred dollar refundable deposit required for payment cuts and two hundred for gravel cuts. A twenty-five dollar administration fee.
First I've ever seen that.
Yeah, so we have a pavement cut out here, and then down on
Railroad Street.
Railroad Street, I think, who repairs those?
I will.
Okay.
You all repairs for that.
Kind of too bad we just paid Tap Terrace.
Yes.
Yeah.
Yeah.
You sent that to me, Sandy?
I will, I'll print it off right now for you.
Hey, we did have a talk the other day about starting a permit for any utility companies doing underground work in town.
Yeah.
Yeah.
So...
I think this one, we ought to revisit at a future meeting, though, I mean-
Yeah, it does, yeah.
It's a little, yeah.
It's one taxpayer-
Right.
We're all taxpayers, we're gonna pay for it one way or the other, so...
Yeah, because he's just gonna tack it into his paperwork cost, too. More for Chris.
So, did you say it was refundable, so if it's fixed, fixed to your satisfaction?
Exactly.
There's no charge?
There isn't.
Well, he's still gonna charge to do it.
What?
He'll still charge the hourly to do it. He's gotta do his paperwork on it, but what makes it longer for Chris.
Well, Mary Ann does it, Chris won't have to do it, Mary Ann will just do it. I send her, I send her the permit excavation form every year.
I've done it for forty-two years in this town and never seen that.
I can show you all my emails.
You're a lawbreaker, girl.
Yeah, well, I know.
I mean, you guys can get rid of it, but there just needs to be a trigger, there needs to be a trigger to fix it. You know how long, remember how long Maple Street, or not Maple, the one down there, remember heading to, towards Creek Road? That was bumped over for a year before that one was fixed, so there just, there needs to be, I think this is just a trigger to make sure these things happen, these things get fixed.
That was done at the end of the season, though, that was why we couldn't get pavement. We paved it and it settled. That was all part of that true gentleman thing.
Doesn't necessarily have to completely go away, but I
Right.
It probably ought to be a subject of discussion here in the future, though.
Yeah.
Okay.
So we're on to executive session for personnel.
Okay. I make a motion to go into executive session? Personnel issues?
Do you realize your head is this way?
So I did make a motion?
Okay, under-
Okay.
You don't have to?
I just had a question.
Oh, yeah, that's what you need to say.
I was just wondering if you guys had made any stand on the Bridge project with the state in East Wallonford? If they'd asked you for any opinions or?
They haven't.
They have not.
And you guys did not make one as the board that represent the town, or?
No, we haven't as a board, I have as an individual.
Okay. But you don't, you don't plan on doing it as a board then, or? I mean, they basically were here without any asking, were they not, or?
They really didn't ask, they just told what they had in mind.
Oh, yeah, I know, that's why I was wondering if you had done it.
Okay.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you.
So under one VSA, section three-one-three A three, I make a motion to go into executive session to, on evaluation of employees.
Second?
I'm sorry, good.
Who's in favor?
Aye.
Aye.